Welcome to the regular meeting at the Temple ISD Board of Trustees, held here on May 12th, 2025, beginning at 6:00 PM. Our first item is to call to order. Our second item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everybody please stand and face the American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Item three is public comments on agenda items. Monica, has anybody signed up tonight? Okay. Item four is a superintendent's recognition with Dr. Lisa Adams. Board members, could we please come in front of the dais for the recognitions? Our first is the state and national qualifiers.
The May Board meeting gives us opportunity to recognize our students who qualified for state or national competition in advanced academics, athletics, career and technical education, and fine arts. Temple High School had two students qualify for state competition in UIL Academics. Those students are Arian Galeria in mathematics and Genevieve Allen in ready riding. Their sponsor is Tyler Parker. Come right to the middle. Students, if you'll come to the middle, we'll take a picture all together. Right there. Moms and dads will take as many pictures as you like. Fantastic. We got it? Okay, if you guys don't mind going out that way. Can they get through back there? Thank you so much. All right, come on up here, right here. Yep. Perfect. Okay, when I call your name, you go up and shake everybody's hand. The Temple ISD Career and Technical Education Program has qualified a number of students for state and national competition, and we've already had the opportunity to recognize more than 80 state and national qualifiers from those high school and middle school programs. But there are three other CTE-related groups we want to recognize tonight. Five of our FFA students earned the Texas FFA Lone Star Degree this year. Those students are Angel Escada, Sonia Valerio, Scarlett Salinas, Reagan Daniel, Andrea Costilla Cruz, and their sponsor is Christie Branton. Y'all go on up and shake their hands. Great job. All right, come back to the middle, please, for a picture. Come on up here. Perfect. So when I start reading names, I can just... Looks so good. Any pictures, mom and dad, feel free. Got it? Fantastic. Congratulations. The Police Explorers Program qualified for the following students for state. Go ahead. Summer Nguyen, Angelica Gomez, Trent Locklear, Noah Arntal Madrid, Jacob Braniff, Eli Flores, Valerie Maldonado, and their sponsor is Crystal Batriol. Congratulations. Are welding, is there any welding students here? Perfect. Okay. So y'all are athletic training? Okay. All the pictures? All right. Got pictures? All right, congratulations. Fantastic. All right, we also had two welding students place, and they're not here tonight, but Missael Ibarra and Justin Munoz also placed state, and so we want to recognize them. All right. Now to athletics. We had athletes who made it to the state level of competition, and we want to recognize them. So we'll start with our athletic trainers coached by Ms. Wendy Scrabonic. Avery Thomas was a TSATA Academic All-State, and Kalia Williams was as well. Congratulations, ladies. Oh, there you are. I should have recognized you. I get so focused on what I'm doing. Come to the middle. Good job. Congratulations. All right. From girls track with Coach Tamika Lavon, we have Kari Holloman. Kari placed fifth in the state competition for long jump. Congratulations, Kari. She does, has a school record. Way to go, Kari. I think her coach has a school record, too. Yes, she does. Oh, over here? Did you get it? Okay. Good. Everybody? All right. Congratulations. Thank you. All right. Next, we have powerlifting with Coach Chris Pilot. Nani Rubio, Kalen Wolf, Mariah Gaines, Jazaria Clinton were state competitors. Go ahead and walk on up, shake their hands. And then Kate Burke was THSPA Elite Academic All-State Team. Congratulations, powerlifters. All right, y'all come back to the middle, we'll take your picture. I know it. Is that good? Great job. Thank you. Okay, with tennis, Coach Robert Gerard, and we have Genevieve Allen and Keegan Dutton. They were named THSCA Academic All-State for tennis. Congratulations. Let's see, we also had... Oh, sorry. Right there. There we go. Okay, thank you. Good job. We also had one wrestling student who couldn't be here, Pablo Aguilar, and he was a state competitor. He's coached by Jeremy Engelke. So congratulations to our athletes. All right, now we'd like to recognize our fine art students for their accomplishment, and we're going to start with our elementary art students. Seven Temple ISD students won Top of Teams Awards from the Texas Art Education Association. This recognition is the highest award an elementary art student can win, and only top 10% of students in the state receive the Top Teams Award. So from Kennedy Powell Elementary, we have Lily Martinez and Quinn McCauley, and their teacher is Stephanie Gordon. From Meredith Dunbar, we have Alicia Naurat Maldonado. No? Okay. From Scott Elementary, we have Ivana Benoy, Evelyn Johnson, and Alex Mohica. Go ahead and go on up. And their teacher is Brianna Hale. And then from Western Hills Elementary, we have Karina Rodriguez, and her teacher is Megan Foster. Is that you? Good job. We have one more teacher to come. Are you going to come up there? Yes, Ms. Lovey. That's all right, Ms. Lovey, come on up. Was that, were you one of the students? No? Okay. Fantastic. Yes, fantastic. All right, we'll take a picture. Do we get all the pictures? All right, fantastic. We'll go out that way, Ms. Gordon. Congratulations, elementary art. All right, do we have middle school art? We're going to transition now to middle school and secondary art. So four Temple ISD students won Platinum Awards at the Junior Visual Arts Scholastic Event, or VACE. The Platinum Award is the highest honor you can win at middle school. So from Lamar Middle School, where we have Gabriela de la Cruz teaching art, we have Jan Ramos and Austin Beal. Come on up and shake their hands. And then from Bottom Middle School, we have Serenity Hayes and Clover Levitt. And our teachers are Stacy Smith and Patrick Dolan. Congratulations. Are y'all banned? Okay, come on up. Excuse us, ma'am. How are you? Good. Good. All right, we'll come back to the middle, please, and take a picture, if you guys don't mind. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Fantastic job. We'll exit that way. Thank you so much. They'll let you through, I promise. All right. Now, we also want to recognize our Wildcat Band Choir and Orchestra. They were all well represented at the Texas State Solo and Ensemble Contest, and so I'll read the names of the band members first. Malik Badger, two-time qualifier. Matthew Barfoot. Christian Benjamin. Anna Maria Beruman. Jaden Bill. DeAndre Colbert. Lily Cortez. Amari Dobbins. Tayshaun Folks. Sebastian Guillen. Ryan Hackett. Santos Hernandez. Riley Jacobs. Mallory Gerald. Aiden Lampkin. Adalia Lopez. Diane Nieses. Maldonado Ortiz. Erin McCarty. Benjamin Mendez. Jasmine Moreno. Deonte Nixon. Brittany Ortiz. Noah Peña. Gabriel Reyna, three-time qualifier. Alejandra Robles. Marissa Brokowski. Brayden Sands. Brayden Slay. Crystal Soto, three-time qualifier. Emily Stanfield. Dylan Stefan. Alondra Suarez. Sarah Talanongo. Christopher Tate, three-time qualifier. Dinah Toll. Nashawn Trivier. Joseline Valdivia. And Erickson Valladolid Housidio. The Wildcat Band is under the direction of Brent Matheson, Marcus Duran, and Peter Milliken. Our award-winning Wildcat Band. Congratulations. Parents, feel free to come in and take a picture. Oh, yeah. If you're short, come down front. Make sure everybody can see your face. If you can't see them, they can't see you. There you go. You guys should have brought your instruments. You could have serenaded. That would have been fantastic, wouldn't it? Okay, hold on just a minute, a little bit longer. Make sure we got all the pictures we need. Great job. Great job. Okay, parents, are we good? Nope, got a few more parents. Everybody got everything they need? Well done, Wildcat Band. We're proud of you. We'll go that way. We'll go out that way. Going out that way. So the students are going to come right here, so we can't stand right there, okay? All right, okay, stand right here. So as I start reading names, even if it's not your name, just go ahead and walk on out. I think y'all are basically in order, right? Okay, perfect. Are you first, Perla?
No.
Okay, perfect. Okay, okay. You're here. You ready? Yep, and just kind of peek around, okay? All right. So now we'd like to recognize our Temple High School Choir. First, we have Perla Alejos, Sam Baron, Evelyn Baugh, Abigail Bowers, Ada Deng, Sebastian Dominguez... Keep going all the way down. Sorry, sorry, Sam. John Mark Gary. Chloe Green. Adrian Lopez. Nathan McCurdy. Vanessa Martinez-Gomez. Victoria Carisales. Maribel Castillo. McKenna Davis. Connor Frazier. Isabella Rodriguez. Nettie Royal. Elena Slosson. Jesus Smith. Kaylee Som. Cody Zonto. Avery Tarbet. Avery Thomas. Junius Thompson. Colby Ticknor. And Kelsey Waller. Temple High School Choirs are directed by Cameron Reclo and Megan Burke. Congratulations, choir. All right, just hold, hold. Everybody smile pretty. Do we have all the pictures we need? All right, thank you. Well done. You guys will go out this way. Great job. Great job, choir. You've got to come again, yes. Let's see. You're last. John Mark, you're last. You are. Then Stephen. And then Gustavo, and then John Mark. Okay? Yeah? Perfect. All right, and finally, for our orchestra, we would like to recognize Arian Galeria, Stephen Jones... Go ahead, go up there and shake hands. Stephen Jones, Gustavo Sanchez, and once again, John Mark Gary, who qualified in both choir and orchestra. The Temple High School Orchestra is under the direction of Nathaniel Kiefer. Well done, orchestra. All right, gentlemen, if you'll go to the middle so we can take a picture. There we go. All right, let's make sure we got all the pictures. Yep. Okay, thank you, gentlemen, you head out that way. Well done.
Item B is TLSBA Scholar Lily Cortez.
All right, Lily. Come on up here. All right, Temple High School Senior Lily Cortez has been recognized by the Texas Latino School Board Association as one of that organization's TLSBA Scholars for 2025. TSLBA Scholars are seniors in Texas public schools who are known for their scholarship and service, and who might be lifted up as models for their peers and for the younger students who look up to them. In many cases, they have overcome various obstacles in life, and each scholar also receives a scholarship to help them continue their studies beyond high school. Lily is one of just 225 students from across the state to be recognized as a TLSBA Scholar this year. She's a drum major for the Wildcat Band and was just recognized as a state qualifier as a trumpet player. Lily is also a member of the award-winning Temple Highlighters. She takes AP classes and will graduate in the top 10% of her senior class this year. Congratulations on this remarkable achievement, Lily. We look forward to seeing all you'll accomplish in the future. Congratulations. Well done. That was exciting.
And item C is the principal pipeline.
All right. So our assistant principals. Investing in Growth is one of the core commitments at the heart of our leadership framework designed through the Holdsworth Collaborative. I feel like our principal, assistant principals are outside to allow parents to be... Do you mind? Okay. Ms. Thomas is going to help me. Thank you, principal. Growing our current team members to expand their leadership capacity creates an internal pipeline and potential path for succession across the district. Campus principals play a critical role in the school district as they directly support the work of our teachers and oversee student learning. For this reason, Temple ISD elected to focus on our efforts to grow our current leaders by developing a principal pipeline for assistant principals. Here they come. Over here, ladies. So they can be ready to apply for future potential principal openings. Our Principal Pipeline program has just completed its second year of implementation and included identifying high-potential candidates and providing these assistant principals with focused opportunities to grow in key areas identified as necessary for campus leaders. We are so very pleased to highlight the potential principal pipeline participants. There was a lot of "pe" in that. Brittany Anderson, Assistant Principal at Western Hills Elementary School. Myra Bolivar, Assistant Principal at Meredith Dunbar Elementary. Joannie Caraballo Lopez, Assistant Principal at Travis Science Academy. Laura Lopez, Assistant Principal at Sampson Howard Elementary School. And lastly, Amanda Winkler, Assistant Principal at Scott Elementary School. Please join us in congratulating these leaders for their commitment to excellence and self-development. Very proud of you, ladies. All right. So we'll come back to the middle, ladies, and we'll take a picture. And I'll just say about this group, all of this work that they did to develop themselves as leaders was done above and beyond their regular assistant principal duties, and so we appreciate their effort. We really do. Okay, we're going to wait till all the moms and dads are taking pictures, okay? All right. Well done. Thank you, ladies.
Okay. Item five is executive hires. David McCauley, presenting that. Item A, consideration for approval of principal of Ray Allen Elementary School, Jenny Shoal.
All right, just making sure everybody's getting in. So the Ray Allen Elementary Interview Committee, consisting of Alexandria Lewis, Denise Chisholm, Erica Harris, Manny Nelson, Melissa Starkey, Carrie Monks, Jasmine Williams, Carla Goddard, Adrian Lopez, and Dr. Sarah Watson, interviewed six candidates for the principal or for the position of principal of Ray Allen Elementary on April 10th, 2025, and recommended the top three candidates to interview with the senior leadership team. The SLT interviewed the top three on April 15th and selected Ms. Jenny Shoal as a lone finalist for the position. Ms. Shoal graduated from Texas A&amp;M University in 2001 with a Bachelor's of Science in interdisciplinary studies, and she graduated from Texas A&amp;M University in Central Texas in 2014 with a Master's of Education in Educational Leadership. Ms. Shoal currently serves as an assistant principal at Dr. Jimmy Don Acock Middle School... That's a mouthful. ...in Klean ISD. Prior to that, she served as an elementary assistant principal, a campus literacy instructional specialist, and a fifth-grade teacher, all in Klean ISD. She also served as a literacy consultant with leech literacy training for two years in 2018 to 2020. Ms. Shoal and her husband, J.C., who's with her, have been married for almost 24 years and have three children, Addison, Grant, and Caleb. Addison is finishing her freshman year as an education major at Texas A&amp;M University. Come on. I know there's some people that... But some of us are a little bit smarter. Going to A&amp;M. Yeah?
David, you're on your own with that one.
There you go. No, I went to A&amp;M, my goodness, y'all. And hopes to come back in Central Texas, the area to teach elementary school, hopefully in Temple ISD. That wasn't in there, but I added it. Grant's a senior about to graduate from Harker High School. He'll be attending Texas A&amp;M University in the fall, studying rangeling, wildlife, and fisheries management, while also being a proud member of the Aggie Band. Caleb is a nine-year-old finishing up his fourth grade year. He loves all things outdoors, gives the best hugs, and has developed a talent for archery. Ms. Shoal has a passion for education and student learning, is excited to join Temple ISD as a Ray Allen Eagle. Is with great pleasure. At the interview committee, he recommends Ms. Jenny Shoal to the Board of Trustees for approval for the position of principal at Ray Allen Elementary on this date. Ms. Shoal? Well, just come on up here, so they know who you are.
This item does require approval. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion, Mr. Gaines?
A second motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you.
My notes are on my phone, so give me just a moment. First of all, it's a pleasure to be here. I have heard nothing but amazing things about Temple ISD. I quietly asked different people who are in different positions here in this district, tell me something important, and every one of them separately said what a family it is and what an amazing level of support there are for educators and leaders and families and students here. And that just absolutely warmed my heart. Thank you so much for considering me, for approving this position. It is with great humility that I say thank you to all of you. Thank you to the senior leadership team. I thoroughly enjoyed getting to talk with all of you during the interview. It felt welcoming. It felt very supportive. To the Ray Allen... To the Ray Allen Eagles who are here in attendance, who just about made me cry showing up just right away already in full support. Thank you for welcoming me to your home. I look forward to joining with you all in the work that we do. You heard some special introductions being made. My family, I also have here my mom. She has been a longtime member of education, working in schools in a variety of capacities. I also have my mom's husband, David, and they're just part of my network. I also have somewhere back in here, my current principal, Savannah Jimenez, who has been such a champion and such an amazing role model at what leadership can be. And so just thank you to all of you for being here tonight. One of the things that I was asked, when I was asked to come up and speak was, what do you think about, when you think about Ray Allen? And I continue to think about eagles. We go to Colorado often. I'm a mountains girl. It's quiet. It's cool. It's nice and cool up there. I've wanted to see eagles in the wild. Every time I've gone, it's never happened. And just a couple weeks ago, my son was at a crossover campout ceremony, and a pair of bald eagles right here at Tohoya flew over. I thought, well, if that's not a little moment, a little sign, I don't know what it is. So I thought, okay, what's important about an eagle? Well, there's a neat analogy. There are very few things that pester an eagle. And for those of you who know this story, I hope you humor me for a minute. A crow is one of the very few birds that will mess with an eagle. And what it does is it gets on its back and it starts to pick and it pecks at it. And the eagle doesn't fight back. It could, and it doesn't display any kind of anger. It simply rises. And it flies higher and higher until the crow cannot survive in that environment and has to fall away. So when I thought about that, I thought, that's what we do as educators. Regardless of our position, whether we are serving on a board, whether we are serving in a leadership position, whether we are serving children in a classroom, serving children in a cafeteria line, serving children by creating a safe and quiet, clean environment for them. We rise. And so rise really stood out to me. And so I kind of put my thoughts together for R-I-S-E, for eagles and how they rise. Rise. We reach beyond what we thought possible. I. We inspire greatness in those around us. S. We set the bar high. And E. We encourage one another in the journey. Thank you so much, Temple ISD. Just seeing all the families and kids here, it is such an honor to be joining your family. I look forward to getting to know all of you. Thank you again.
I want to thank Mrs. Shoal's family ahead of time for sharing her with us. Because that will happen, for sure, being a principal in Temple. And what I'd say to Mrs. Shoal is that, you know, Ray Allen is such a special place. I mean, every time I walk on that campus, I have to tell you, it is hard to leave. I mean, they are a fabulous group of teachers back there and staff. And they do the Lord's work every day with children and do such a fantastic job. And we look forward to your work with them and continue to make it a special place. Thanks for being here.
All right. Item B, consideration for approval of principal of Lamar Middle School, Michelle Rhodes.
So the Lamar Middle School Interview Committee comprising of John Batson, Kimberly George, Ivana Howard, Pearl McGaien, I hope I said that right, Liam McGuire, Karen Pollock, Linda Terry, Chad Winmer, Adrian Lopez, and Dr. Renata Rogers interviewed six candidates for the position of principal at Lamar on April 25th and recommended the top three candidates to the senior leadership team. The senior leadership team interviewed those candidates on May 1st and selected Ms. Michelle Rhodes as a lone finalist for the principal position. Ms. Rhodes is a proud lifelong Wildcat. And she's a 1996 graduate of Temple High School and a former student of Western Hills and Travis Middle School. She earned her Bachelor's of Science in interdisciplinary studies from the University of Mary Aron Baylor in 2008 and followed that with a Master's of Education in Educational Leadership from Lamar University in 2014. Ms. Rhodes brings 26 years of dedicated service to Temple ISD. She currently serves as the principal of Thornton Elementary. Her previous roles include four years as an instructional, as an assistant principal at Lamar Middle School, as well as the service as a campus instructional specialist, elementary teacher, and instructional aide, all within Temple ISD. Ms. Rhodes and her husband Byron have been married for four years and together share a blended family of three adult children and one grandchild. With a deep passion for education and student success, Ms. Rhodes is thrilled to return to the Lamar community. Is with great pleasure that the interview committee recommends Ms. Michelle Rhodes to the board trustees for approval for the position of principal at Lamar Middle School on May 12th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. This does require approval?
Move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gaines?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, you have the same side. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you.
I am determined to get through my letter. Those of you that know me, know me. Good evening, everyone. First, I give honor to God, who has blessed me with the heart to serve and a desire to walk in His will. I would like to express my sincere gratitude to Mr. Posey and the board of trustees for entrusting me with the opportunity to serve as principal of Lamar Middle School. Thank you, Dr. I and the senior leadership team, for your steadfast belief in me. I am especially grateful to the Lamar Interview Committee. Your vote of confidence is deeply appreciated. Tonight, I am surrounded by those who have supported me on this journey. To my husband Byron, my mother, my daughter Janasia, and my mother's Ms. Cookie. Wave your hand, Ms. Cookie. And to my extended family and close friends. Thank you for your constant love, encouragement, and prayers. I would also like to recognize and thank my Thornton family. Your unwavering support over the years has been a true blessing and I will always be grateful. Serving as principal of Thornton Elementary for the past six years has been one of the most rewarding experiences of my career. We begin our journey during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. A time without a playbook, yet through every challenge, we built lasting relationships and a strong school culture that I will forever hold dear. As many of you know, my administrative journey began at Lamar Middle School as an assistant principal. The lessons learned and the relationships built during those early years left a lasting impression on me. It is both an honor and a privilege to return to Lamar and serve once again, now as your campus principal. I look forward to building meaningful connections with our students, staff, families, and our broader Bearcat family. To my Bearcats, I am filled with excitement as we begin this next chapter together. I'm committed to walking beside you with purpose, vision, and a heart for service. Thank you.
So Michelle is the dictionary definition of someone who has given their entire life of service and career to one place. Student here started out as an instructional aide, became a teacher, became an instructional coach, assistant principal, elementary principal, and now middle school principal. Completely dedicated every ounce of herself to the community of Temple, students of all ages, and just every part of Temple ISD. And Michelle, you know this already, but I mean, we know it's extremely important to be a Wildcat, but a very close second is being a Bearcat. I mean, you know, I mean, we all know that, right? Once a Bearcat, always a Bearcat, right? They always say that. So congratulations to you, and I know this is a dream of yours, and we look forward to watching it play out. Congratulations.
Item six is the board presence report. A, consideration for approval to appoint a public officer as District Two trustee, Brelasia Alexander. Members, this requires approval.
I move for approval.
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
Seconded motion.
Seconded, Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. The ayes have it. Welcome. Well, now I also want to say thank you so much for your 10 years of service on the board.
I know we recognized Linnell in the other room, but let's give her another round of applause.
Item B is the administration of statement, excuse me. Administration of statement of officer and oath of office for board members for District One, Two, and Six. It's Brelasia Alexander, Virginia Suarez, and Shannon Gallin, and Mrs. Boyd.
Ladies, if you'll raise your right hand. As a notary of public, I'm honored to administer the oath of office. Please raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, please repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Trustees of the Temple Independent School District of the State of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Thank you very much and congratulations.
Brelasia, welcome to the board. We're so glad to have you here. Since you know, I've been on the board 14 years. It's the best thing I ever did. And hopefully, your experience would be the same too. This is truly a great institution, a great district, and a great group of folks. So with that, I'll let you, whatever you'd like to say, whoever you'd like to recognize.
Well, I'm a little overwhelmed. So being on the board is something that I dreamed about. I know I didn't share that with a lot of people. And I didn't think it would be an option for me. I'm very humbled. And when I look into the audience and I see my family and my friends, it means a lot. Growing my career and growing my family at the same time is a challenge, but each of you play a part in that. I couldn't do it without y'all. As you know, Noah's very active. I always need a babysitter, but I really appreciate it because I wouldn't be successful without y'all. And if y'all would, my husband, would you please stand? My daughter that you've heard probably the entire time, Noah. My parents, would y'all please stand? My parents. And if you're a part of my village and you're hearing the support of me with this, would you please stand? Means the world. Thank you, guys. Sorry, I'm hormonal and emotional.
Well, again, welcome aboard. Thank you for dedicating yourself and joining the board. Shannon, would you like to say anything?
I have been on the board since 2014, and I will agree with Dan. I think this is the best thing that I ever did. You know, I used to be in the classroom in the early 2000s, and I left to go work in the real world, so to speak. And there was one day that I was thinking to myself, I've got to find a way to get closer to kids again. I've really missed that I was in an office with big people. And I just, it didn't always fit me. And so it was funny, that next day, I got a call from Street Steve Wright, who was president of the board at that time. And Joelle Bedwell had moved out of her district and they needed somebody to fill this spot. And so with a lot of prayer, I ended up doing it. And I tell you what, this is something I would do forever if y'all would let me. But I really enjoy being here, serving all of our kiddos. They're not just... They're not just your kiddos, not just my kiddos, but they're all of our kiddos. It makes me emotional too. And I'm not even, well, maybe I am hormonal, but it's different. Anyway, but thank y'all very much for allowing me to do this for yet another term. I'm looking really forward to serving you.
Did anyone want to say something?
You would put me. All I can say is, growing up Eastside, always feeling like we weren't enough and that we weren't going to accomplish. When I got on this board initially, it was because someone encouraged me to run. Didn't know what I was getting into. Bree knows what she's getting into. And it's a good thing. It's good to have a voice that's going to speak for our kids. And it takes all of us to make it better. I came from a family. My parents were not educated. They had no schooling at all, work fields. And it took me a lot of years to feel like I belonged here and that I understood what was really going on. And I won't lie, there's forever changing, so we're learning something every year and every day. But in my personal life, God didn't bless me with children. So our babies are my babies. And it's our job, whether we're on the board or out in the community, to do what we can to make sure that they're successful. And that's the challenge that God has given me and the blessing He's given me. Because in my heart, in the hard times of my life, when I haven't had a job or haven't, this has been the constant in my life. And no matter where I go, I feel the love and the support. And I hope that I continue to serve our students and our parents and our staff in the way that is meant to be.
All right, thank you. Item C is the TISD Board of Trustees Officers' Election. Tonight, we will be voting on board officers, the President, Vice President, and Secretary. At this time, we'll entertain nominations for Board President.
I'd like to nominate Dan Posey.
All right, thank you.
A seconded motion.
Any other nominations? All right, the nominations are being closed. All in favor of Dan Posey for Board President, signify by saying aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Thank you. This is, again, the best thing I've ever done. I enjoy my work here and working with y'all and everybody in the district. So thank you. Thank you for doing this. Our next office is Vice President. I'm opening nominations now for Vice President.
I nominate Ronnie Gaines.
A nomination of Ronnie Gaines.
A second.
Seconded by Shannon Myers. Are there any other nominations out there for the Office of Vice President? Seeing none, we'll close this. All in favor of Ronnie Gaines for Vice President, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign? The ayes have it. Ronnie, welcome back.
Well, thank you, Dan.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I thoroughly enjoy serving with all of you guys. It's been a privilege working with all of you. I've learned so much. And I came into this kind of with a preconceived idea. I knew what goes on in the schools. And I found out right away I really didn't so. But I've learned a lot, and I really am thrilled to work and serve at this capacity again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ronnie. All right, the Office of Secretary of the Board, open now for nominations.
Nominate Virginia Suarez.
Nomination of Virginia Suarez and Mrs. Cook.
A second.
Seconded by Shannon Gallin. Any other nominations for Secretary? With that, closing the nominations. All in favor, signify by saying aye for nomination of Virginia Suarez for Secretary.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign? The ayes have it. Well, congratulations, Virginia. Welcome back. Now we can get back down to work. Item D is the Designation of Delegate and Alternate to the Tazby Delegate Assembly in Houston, Texas on Saturday, September 13th, 2025. Shannon Gallin will be the delegate for the board, and Virginia Suarez will be the alternate. I don't think we need to vote. I think we just need to name it. Okay. Item E is Designation of Facilities and Policy Committee Members for '25, '26. And for the Policy Committee, Dawn Cook will be the chair. Dan Posey will be serving, and Brelasia Alexander will be on the Policy Committee. On the Facilities Committee, Ronnie Gaines will be on there as the chair. Shannon Myers, Virginia Suarez, and Shannon Gallin. All right. Item F is Future Items of Discussion. Members, we do have our Team Development Assessment Report at our desk. We will take the time to look at that, and then we will work on next steps, what we'd like to do with that. And that information is, our assessment is already posted online. Okay. And item, any future items discussion? Discuss at a future board meeting? All right. Item G is Important Dates. Dr. Ott.
All right, well, it's May, and there are a lot of them. Starts tomorrow morning. Well, first of all, I want to encourage board members, and I do this in our leadership team meetings as well, administrators, to attend as many of these as possible. It means so much to our parents and students to see us joining them and celebrating their culminating successes at the end of the school year. So tomorrow morning, we actually at the Mayborn Center have a breakfast at 8:30 a.m., and that is to celebrate the Middle Schools Top 10% Awards. Bonn, Travis, and Lamar all do this together. And it's a really great event if you have the opportunity to attend. The following day, we have the Senior Awards, Top 10% Upper Classmen, and that is 6 p.m. in Temple High School Auditorium. And Brelasia, just so you know, oh, you already see the sheet, okay. You have the important dates in the packet and in front of you. May 16th, at the Temple High School Auditorium, 6 p.m., we do the CNA-CMA Pinning Ceremony. That is a really special event if you have the opportunity to go watch our students be pinned for their work. And then, we actually this Saturday have the NAACP Senior Scholarship Banquet. That's always a very special event. And we're very grateful for the NAACP for working together and putting together scholarships to help our students remove some of the barriers that may be in front of them as they try to pursue their post-secondary education careers. May 19th, we have our Fine Arts Signing Day. That's actually here at 4 p.m. in the Administration Building. That's always a very special event. As you know, several years ago, we started that so we can honor our fine arts, much the same way that athletics is honored in signings. And like I said, that's always been a very special event since it started. The following Tuesday, May 20th, we have the Superintendent's Scholar Reception, and that is also here at 5:30 p.m. That's where we honor the top 10, and that's numeric, not percentage, top 10 freshmen, top 10 sophomores, and top 10 juniors altogether. And as recently as right before the board meeting, had the opportunity to secure a guest speaker who is actually a former Superintendent Scholar as a freshman, sophomore, and junior, and a graduate of Temple ISD, or Temple High School, rather, in 2021. Very excited to have her kick it off. I think students would much rather hear from her than someone that graduated over 30 years ago. The CCMR Court Breakfast. This is a new event, and we're really excited about this. Career College and Military Readiness, May 22nd. They have a breakfast event, Temple High School Cafeteria, 8:30 a.m. Like I said, this is the first time the high school has done this event. CCMR is very important. It's not only an indicator in the accountability system, but it's a measure of success for our students after they graduate. And the high school has taken it upon themselves to recognize this in that way and really celebrates students who have earned these types of honors. So we're very excited. I really want to encourage you to attend that as well. Retirement Banquet, that's always a very special occasion. That's at Temple Bible Church at noon, May 22nd, actually the same day. So if you go to both, you'll have two free meals. And then, we have the Board Policy Committee Meeting, May 28th. And that night, after the Board Policy Committee Meeting, we actually have the parent meeting for future of Temple ISD at the auditorium at 6 p.m. Those have been really good events. The last one we had was to talk about AI in education. Appreciate Dr. Ashley Jones. Somebody cut me off because I'm talking too long. But yeah, see, they're all like, I wish we could. But very excited. You know, we've been starting this series. I think this is number four for us, I believe, as a way to really directly connect with our families and parents. And this has been exciting. It's really been educational. And then the next day, we have the Board Facilities Committee Meeting, 4 p.m. here. Graduation, May 31st, 10 a.m., Cadence Bank Center. And I do want to let Lanell and Brelasia both know that both of you will be handing out diplomas that day, okay, along with the rest of our board. So please be there, and we'd like to get there early. And I'll send out information on that. It's important to get there early because of traffic and everything else. So we can kind of go over the details onstage. And then June 5th, we have a board retreat at 8:30 a.m. So if you're bored in May and June, there's plenty to do. So I hope to see you at as many events as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ott. Item seven is Consent Items, A through J4. What is the pleasure of the board to deal with these items?
I move that we approve all consent agenda items in one motion.
Motion by Ms. Gallin, is there a second?
A seconded motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign? The ayes have it. Passes, thank you. All right. Item eight, Action Items, Human Resources. One consideration for approval to propose non-renewal of term contract employees. The board has received a recommendation from the Superintendent of Schools to notify Ryan Curry of the proposed non-renewal of his term contract. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board give Ryan Curry notice of proposed non-renewal of his term contract.
Motion by Mr. Gaines, is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. Any discussion? All those who favor the motion to notify Ryan Curry of the proposed non-renewal of his term contract, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Seven to zero. Item B is Academics. One consideration for approval of instructional materials for K-5 Math and K-5 English, language arts not to exceed $600,000. Dr. Rogers, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Ott, Mr. Posey, and members of the board. I have two quick items for you. The first one, as Mr. Posey stated, is a consideration of approval of math and reading resources. State approved, as noted on the document, as well as the purchase of the materials related to those resources. You can see on the document those specific resources as well as the summary indicating how we arrived at our request. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, members? Is this approval move for approval? Motion by Mr. Gaines.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, Consideration for Approval to Participate in Bluebonnet Learning Spanish Instructional Materials Pilot for Math and Reading, not to exceed $60,000.
Yes. And so, in order to ensure alignment with our curriculum for English as well as for Spanish, we are requesting your approval to participate in the Spanish Instructional Materials Pilot for Math and Reading. And so, you can see the summary of our proposal as well as the district responsibilities, which include providing feedback to the state as they work to finalize the resource for final approval by the State Board of Education. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Dr. Rogers? This does require approval.
I move to approve. A second.
Motion by Mrs. Gallin, Ms. Gallin, seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Item C, Facilities and Operations. No items tonight. Item D, Finance, '25, '26 Attendance Initiative. Mrs. Stanford, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dan Posey and board members. TISD, when I think about them, I think about supporting the whole student. So the question in your minds is, why is the finance person standing up here with a motto of "Here today, ready for tomorrow"? I'm not generally the most creative one in the bunch, but our team has continually looked for different ways to support academics, human resources, and student services to support the whole student. And so, we would like to propose an attendance initiative for next year. As you may recall, we have very little local control over generating revenues. Unfortunately, I cannot control our enrollment or our student characteristics. No one can. But what we can try to control is our attendance rates. Attendance rates hopefully will improve student academics and strengthen our teacher impacts. So our district right now at Snapshot is about 8,800 students and 75% economically disadvantaged. It has been proven that students who live in communities with high levels of poverty are four times more likely to be chronically absent than others, often for reasons that are beyond their control, such as unstable housing, unreliable transportation, and a lack of access to health care. So why would we be wanting to look at student attendance? Since COVID-19 pandemic, although we've had a few years since, statewide, average daily attendance has dropped more than 3%. Temple ISD's average daily attendance has dropped by more than 2%. And our chronic absenteeism has increased by more than 25% here in the district. The reason to take action is because absenteeism in the first month of school can predict poor attendance for the whole entire school year. Half the students who miss two to four days in September will go on to miss nearly a full month of school. Poor attendance can also influence whether school, whether children read proficiently by the end of third grade. And research shows that missing 10% of school, or about 18 days a year, negatively affect their academic performance. And when you think about it, that's just two days a month, and is also called or known as chronically absent. By sixth grade, chronic absenteeism becomes an indicator that a student will drop out of high school. And attendance is a better predictor of graduation rates than their performance on an eighth grade test. When students improve their attendance rates, they improve their academic prospects and chances to graduate. The next reason for an attendance initiative is to understand the difference between truancy and chronic absenteeism. Most schools focus on the data that wants to improve truancy. All they track is how many days a kid is present versus how many days they're absent. But what we really need to look at is how many days a kid is absent for an excused and unexcused absence. Because you might have a kid that has 100% excused absences, but that never gets looked at because we're too focused on truancy. Either way, an absence affects a child, even if it's an excused absence. Chronic absenteeism also shows that most federal data, that at least 30% of students nationwide were chronically absent and at risk academically. The chronic absenteeism for Temple ISD is not just a problem for us, but it's a problem statewide. Students who live in communities with high level of poverty are four times more likely to be chronically absent, and attendance improves when students are engaged and parents are engaged in a positive way. Schools can provide mentors for chronically absent students. The third reason is important to recognize the impact of absences on teachers. In Texas, students' absences significantly impact teachers by increasing their workload, requiring repeated instruction, and potentially hindering student progress, especially for those that are facing disabilities or socioeconomic challenges. Specifically, absences could include disrupted learning flow, reduced student engagement, and increased teacher workflow, difficulty in building those relationships with those students, and ultimately... difficulty in building those relationships with those students, and ultimately reduces teacher morale, which impacts our retention rates for teachers. So we are proposing an attendance initiative. The action plan is that we are going to give, we are going to try to reduce chronic absenteeism by 1% from the prior school year. And how we're going to do that is we're trying to give everybody the historical data on absences and we will give them targets for each campus. In the first semester, we will give our first and second semester, every six weeks, senior leadership team will go out and provide incentives to those campuses that have improved their attendance rate and hit their campus targets for each six weeks. And right now, we are looking at just some small incentives, but we've also asked our administrative team, our principals, and other district employees to give us ideas to branch out. But there's also a monetary component to it. In the first semester, if they are able to increase their attendance rate by 0.10%, they will receive a multiplier effect times their average attendance. Second semester, we're going to do the exact same thing. However, there's a district multiplier that will come into play. And if the campus can hit their targets and the district hits a target, they will get a multiplier to expand that. So let me kind of elaborate and break it down. So the campus will get an attendance goal every six weeks. We are currently partnering with Student Services and Digital Learning this summer to try to get some visual aids to each campus so that way they can incentivize the students. Currently, we're trying to get senior leadership team, but also the administrative team on campuses to make connections to kids. I will tell you, the finance team doesn't really get to make those connections one-on-one. And so they're excited about possibly handing out pickles and popsicles to students. But the idea is the pickles, popsicles, popcorn, those are the ones that we're reaching out to principals to try to come up with a different idea. But we're trying to reach all grade levels so that way it maintains easiness. At the end of each semester, because we know that community partnerships are very important, we have been able to work with spare time and they've come alongside us to offer a student incentive. If our each campus that hits their target for that semester, each student will receive a $10 gift card to spare time for their R-K. Now, the monetary part is, here's an example. Let's say the average daily attendance for that campus increases by half a percent. For half a percent, we are going to pay out $5 for every student in average enrollment. So if we have a 400-student elementary school, times $5, they're going to get $2,000 to use the next semester. And the campus gets discretion on how best it would serve their staff and students. In the second semester, if they hit their target, they would get that $2,000 per student if it was a 400-student campus. And if they increased it by half a percent, but let's just say the district increased our total attendance rate by half a percent, then we would multiply that by an additional $5 per student. So they would generate $10,000 for their campus to use for the next school year. And they get to decide how best to incentivize our students. One campus specifically told us that they would use, I'm sorry. I'm nervous. They would use this money because they would like to buy a soccer goal for their campus. They said that a soccer goal would incentivize students to come and at recess they could play a game of soccer with their friends, but then they could also use it as different celebrations throughout each six weeks to encourage their students. Not only is it get them out exercising, but also they're attending school more often. And so that's just one example that we've talked about using the money for. The second semester, spare time has offered to partner with us again. And they would give our students a $10 gift card to a mini golf course that they are hoping to have open before the end of school, to every student at each campus that can hit their target. Additionally, they have listened to our presentation and agree that our teachers are the ones at the forefront, trying to talk to parents and give them the help that they need to get their students to class. And so they have also agreed to give some sort of gift to our teachers for every campus that hits their target for the year. And right now, they're considering a $50 gift card to every teacher that they could use for dinner or just a family night out. So why would we want an incentive plan? Because we want our students here so that way we can help improve their academics. That's very important. But it also improves the whole entire student aspect. They're here for the extracurricular events. They're here for recess. But also it will help our teachers so that way they're not experiencing expanded workflow of trying to reteach every time a student is absent. It would also help with their burnout. They would be able to better engage with the students. And so I feel like since our funding is limited and we don't have a lot of ways that we can control, we can partner with our other groups within the district and help support them so that way we can hopefully give them a monetary aspect for the campus budgets, but also support in our academic growth. Any questions?
Members, any questions? This is exciting. Thank you very much. Great presentation. Thank you for everything. And please, thanks for everything you do in finance.
And I would just say to the board that Brandy presented this to the senior leadership team. She's also presented to all the principals at, I believe, the previous principal meeting. Is that right? And it was well received. So Brandy, appreciate you coming up with, or, you know, I think you saw some semblance of an idea somewhere at a conference, I believe. And I forgot what district it was. Plano, is that right? Who, which one? KD, KD ISD. But, you know, just introducing new and different ideas in order to try to, you know, continue to engage students and families. So thank you so much for coming up with that. And we're excited to see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item E is Student Services. One consideration for approval, a resolution to support of military-connected families. Michelle Hoggert.
Good evening. One of our goals this year was to have some of our campuses earn a Purple Star designation. And so we looked at Thornton and Bonham for this. The application actually opened up here in April and it closes in June, on June 6th. And some of the things that were required in this application is there had to be an initial meeting at the campuses. The administration and students had to be trained in S2S, the Student-to-Student Program. The website had to have information on military-connected students and there had to be events here in April. And some of the things that were held was the Purple Up Ice Cream in conjunction with UMHB. And there's yard signs. And there will also be a photo submission here in a month or so. And one of the things that helped strengthen this application is having a board resolution. So that's what is presented here for you tonight for your consideration. In August, they will announce what campuses are accepted. And again, we are, we have submitted for Thornton and Bonham.
Any questions? This does require approval. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion by Ms. Gallin.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you. Item two is consideration approval of BE Local Board Meetings.
Members of the Policy Committee brought BE Local to the committee for review. Is this policy which in preparation of the agenda requires at least two board members to be part of that submission? It mirrors a lot of the districts that are in the area. And upon review with TASB, they said that a significant number of districts across the state, this mirrors what they have in their policy. So this policy, BE Local, that's in your packet, is presented for your approval.
Members, any questions? It does require approval.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Myers. Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. It's approved. Item three, Board Policy Education Series, AA Legal, AB Legal, AB Local, AC Legal, AE Legal, AE Local, AF Legal, AF Local, and AG Legal. It's quite a few.
And this is Section A, which is the basic district foundations part of board policy. And so this is the very foundation of the legal status and the authority that you as a board has. And so with AA Legal, this is where you, it illustrates where you get your legal status. And that's from the Constitution of the State of Texas and from the Education Code. So that's where your authority is based. AB Local, and this is where the name of the district is listed. So Temple Independent School District is how it's written in policy. And throughout the policy, this is where it says, it just refers to it as the district from then on. AC Legal, this talks about geographic boundaries and what was originally needed to set it up. Couple interesting things in this is it talks about how to change boundaries. There is a way for minor boundary adjustments. And we as a district, the last time we did that was on February 10th, 2020. And that was when a subdivision was being created. Part of the houses were in another district and part of the plat was in ours. And so there was an exchange of property for that. It could happen by the minor boundary adjustment because of it satisfied two pieces. One, that currently there was no student in the area at the time that the resolution was made. And that the taxable value did not exceed 1/10 of 1% of the total value. So that's why you as a board was able to do, make that change with just a resolution. If one of those situations isn't, doesn't occur, then it's a more extensive process. And that's called detachment and annexation. And that requires not only a resolution, but a hearing and a posting of a public notice. And so it's a very extensive process. The last time we as a district went through detachment and annexation was in 1987 and that was the Wildflower piece of property. Also, before that, it was 1978 and there was a swap with Academy. And then in 1976, there was a swap with Troy and that was to clean up some lines with three 17 and 36 pieces. But that went through a more extensive process where there had to be public hearings and that type thing. AE Legal talks about the state and the state's mission and objectives. Some of the objectives that are listed are having parents be full partners, challenging students to meet their full educational potential, talks about diplomas, as well as specifically mentions innovation and technology and career in tech. If you look at AE Local, that's was, this was last updated by you as a board in 2005. And it says that the philosophy, "We educate our students, we are responsible, we find a way." So that was adopted by you in 2005. AF Legal talks about districts of innovation. And that has to be renewed every five years. And you as a board passed the resolution in 2023 that redid the District of Innovation. Some things that can't be exempted as the district are things like admission, diploma requirements, fiscal year and funding diplomas. But we as a district ask for exemptions for class size, for weekly academics, allowing an academic program to be housed in the same place that a DAP is housed. And that's our weekly academics. Some certifications, particularly with CTE, and then our start date, since it happens before Labor Day. Those are the exemptions that we have as a District of Innovation. And the last one, AG Legal, talks about home rule districts. This was created in 19, by the state in 1995. It was intended to provide a way for local voters, parents, administrators to govern schools according to the community's needs. And again, as I said, it was created for communities in 1995. But the regulations were, for implementation are still large. And despite that, there's been no district in the state that has become a home rule district. So in case you hear, you hear that, that's how that policy came about. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much for going through that. That's always very informative and it's a perfect time to sort of update and educate us again on the material. Item F is the Board Committee Reports. One Policy Committee Meeting Minutes, April 23rd, 2025. Mrs. Cook.
Thank you. The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. Changes to policy BE Local were discussed and presented for consideration at tonight's meeting. The committee reviewed the list of names in CW Local. No names have been added to the list in the past year. Selected policies in the Board Policy Education Series were presented and discussed. These policies were reviewed at tonight's meeting. Meeting was adjourned at 4:29 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Item two, Facilities Committee Meeting Minutes on April 24th, 25. That meeting was canceled. The next committee meeting is Thursday, May 29th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. And before we adjourn, Dr. Ott would like to say something.
I just wanted to, I know this is a little out of order, but I wanted to thank you, Whitney. You know, Whitney has not been in her new leadership position very long, but it's taken her no time to make a splash, not only in the community, but supporting Temple ISD. And I want to thank you on behalf of Jamari Thrasher for working with the Chamber Futures Group to help raise enough money so he has the opportunity to participate where his talents lead him, and that's to the Harvard Summer Leadership Program. We're truly grateful to you on behalf of him. I know he is so grateful. And I believe one of his stipulations is to come back and present or whatever, but he's excited about that already. So I was looking forward to it. But thank you, Whitney, for your leadership and thank you for rallying the troops. And I mean, that's just one of the things that makes Temple special is they take care of their own. I appreciate you spearheading that effort. Thank you so much.
And I just want to take, actually echo everything Dr. Ott said. Whitney, thank you so much. This is something that will change a student's life. And so thank you for the chamber. You're truly involved in the community. Appreciate that. But with no further business, we are adjourned. Thank you very, very much for attending.